This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call the October 19th, 2023 South Whitehall Township Planning Commission to order. First, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance is issued by the United States of America, a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Greg, will you do the roll call?
Yes. Okay, here we go. Trevor Dombach.
Here.
Tim Dugan. Online? No. Todd Farringer.
Here.
Brian Height.
Here.
Diane Kelly.
Here.
Mark Gluth. Online? No. David Wilson. No. We have four members present, which is sufficient for a quorum.
Thank you, Greg. Will you do the meeting rules?
Yes. For an orderly meeting wherein all attendees may be fully able to participate, we ask that you adhere to the following rules. In order that both in-person and remote attendees may hear all comments or questions, all in-person attendees will be required to use microphones at all times. We request that remote attendees, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid background noise that may cause interference in the meeting and make it difficult for others to hear. Staff may mute the microphones or remote attendees if necessary. Public questions and comments will be taken at periodic intervals throughout the agenda. We will start with no time limits, but the Planning Commission Chairman may impose a time limitation if there are many questions or if the meeting is running short on time. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized and then move to the podium when directed. Turn the podium microphone on and state your name, address, and comment or question. Please turn the podium microphone off when done. For remote attendees, the chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address in the chat box. When you are recognized and so directed, please unmute your microphone and state your comment or question. Mute your microphone when done. For those who are accessing the meeting by telephone only, staff will periodically ask for caller comments and unmute any callers. Callers must identify their name and address prior to making a comment. Your cooperation and adherence to these rules will ensure an orderly and respectful meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Our next agenda item is the approval of minutes from the September 21st, 2023 meeting. These were distributed to the members via email. Are there any corrections? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? And any extensions? Passes. I want to make an announcement that the Rouge subdivision, minor plan 2013-2001, has been removed from the agenda at the request of the applicant. So our next agenda item is 1429 Eck Road Outdoor Storage, major plan 2022-109. This is a request for final plan approval. And Greg, will you do the staff presentation?
Yes. This is an application to develop the property located at 1429 Eck Road. The plan proposes to construct a 79 trailer space parking area, 12 of which are to be utilized as 16 reserve standard parking spaces, with eight standard parking spaces and the 16 aforementioned reserved standard parking spaces, a guard shack on the 5.11 acre parcel. The property is to be served by public water and sewer, and is zoned industrial commercial 1, special height limitation IC 1. Full Net Investment CI LLC is the equitable owner and applicant. This plan has been reviewed by the Planning Commission at their December 15th, 2022, and September 15th, 2022 meetings. The Community Development Department recommends that the Planning Commission take the plan under advisement to afford the applicant the time necessary to address the reviewing agency's comments. Our recommendation is contingent upon the applicant granting the township a waiver from the timeframe in which to act upon the plan. The Planning Commission's soft deadline to act on the plan is November 20th, 2023. The Board of Commissioners's hard deadline to act on the plan is December 20th, 2023.
Is the applicant present? Thank you.
And push it off when we meet, right? I heard that part. So you saw this twice before. Marty can probably refresh your memory a little bit. We've got the review comments. We're not looking to get a recommendation tonight, but I think after you refresh their memories, we probably would open up the question because we really only have one item to talk about ourselves, and most of the engineering you're okay with unless you all had spotted something, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, we're in receipt of all the township review letters. As Greg mentioned, have no issues with the majority of comments in those letters. I did reach out to the sewer water engineer to confirm that they had the most current plans to review because that was not reflected in the most recent review letter that I received from them. And as Eric mentioned, we just have one item for discussion this evening out of the Township Engineers Review Letter, and that was item under Section B, General Comment 2A. And so if there was, first, if there were other items the Planning Commission had a concern about on the plans, I'd like to address that, and then we can come back to the R1 concern.
Okay.
We're good? Okay. So is there a better plan to show this? Because it's somewhat anomalistic, and it's hard to describe just verbally, right?
Yeah, it would probably be like our record plan, if that's part of the set there. Good work there.
Yep, perfect.
So, you know, you're all familiar with the property on Eck Road, and then we have a neighbor, adjacent neighbor, Push Cars, do the property research, found that the deed is a very unusual deed, and as written, the property described goes and extends within the road area of Eck Road and down the north side of the Push Car property, a little five-foot strip of land there. Our intent with this, with the plan was to, that's not needed for the development, was just to provide that property, that strip, to the Push Car land, and just, you know, let them merge that into their property, and then just to provide the additional little bit that is in Eck Road to the township. In the most recent comment letter, the comment of concern now references requirement to do roadway improvements in that area along the Push Car frontage. And if my understanding is correct, it's because our property, either our property extends in front of there, or because we're doing the subdivision or lot line adjustment.
All right.
To get to add the five feet to that property.
Yeah.
There is not enough room within the area that is within our control to make the same improvements that you're making in front of your property, correct?
That's correct.
And that's the issue. We still have the land. I guess the thought would be, we got direction as to, okay, add the five to the Push Car lot to the point where it reaches that strip in front of ours, or the time, give us that block in front of Push Car that you own, but it is not wide enough to create the same road improvements, and then do what you've shown on the plan. I mean, that works.
Yeah.
And I guess all it would mean is, to the extent that the Push Car lot gets wrapped up into that requirement solely because we're trying to correct, pardon me, a title defect, we would then say we'd like a waiver. Because, you know, I look at this and I say, I get it when you're developing lots, but in all candor, if we knew this would be theoretically this issue, you would have just come in, done a lot line adjustment right when they got the land to give away the five feet, and we wouldn't have had this problem, right? So what we'd like to confirm is that because of how odd of a situation this is, that to the extent we do need a waiver to not improve a little bit, the inadequate width we have in front of the Push Car lot, we would ask for that, and that we would proceed with it the way we would have, the way we have to have it shown now.
We wanted to get this body's thoughts on that before proceeding, because depending on your positions, it's going to affect pretty much every aspect of the plan and every permitting.
If there are other ideas, we're open to them, but the one we can't unfortunately be open to, we can't make, we can't make our land any bit. It's not our land, right?
Right. Tony, do you have any direct opinion on this? And maybe before you start, have you had any conversations with the Push Car family in this regard?
Not to our knowledge, because this really just, we just kind of really dug into the comment and realized this like Monday, Tuesday.
Okay.
So, no, I don't think there's been an opportunity to reach out to them yet.
Well, I know he's in the audience today, so one of the Push Cars is here, so.
And it's not my position to do that conversation.
Yeah, we'll relay that to the developer.
From our perspective, there's been a lot of development in the area. There's a lot of, there's a lot of additional truck traffic in the area. If everything works out, it would be nice to finish the roadway considering there is widening in front of your property. There will be improvements in front of the property to the north through the intersection, as well as improvements to the west. We understand that this has to be discussions with the property owner. We brought it up for, from an engineering perspective of continuous roadway. In terms of legal requirements, we can't, this is obviously something we can't force.
Yeah, and I think we're okay if that's the position. But we understand the engineering comment. We'll relate to the developer to explore it. But at some point, we may just have to say, it is what it is. And I assume at that point, it would just be to carve off that strip and dedicate that so you've got some of the width already, or not. I mean, that's ultimately not our decision.
But I think, you know, developer would commit to trying to work, you know, trying to see if we make something work out.
Yeah.
But we just, it's not something that we could promise that would happen.
Does our solicitor have any comments on this regard?
I think one of the important things to note is direction of the township as to where they want to go with this. Ultimately, I think a good first step, depending on that, is a conversation between the developer and the Push Cars. And depending on where that goes, possibly the township taking action in terms of condemnation if need be. But again, that's dependent on the direction of where the township wants to go with this.
And I guess our next thought on that is, just ties back to the timelines and, you know, your review requirements and providing extensions and all that, is how do we allocate the time, you know, what's an appropriate amount of time, have those conversations before it's, you know, we move on and keep going with the project as it is. Thought, and a discussion.
We'll plant the seed.
That may be a discussion for the next meeting.
I would say this. We certainly will relate to the developer. I am sure the developer will reach out as soon as possible, but obviously, it's not wholly within our control. We do have, you have other things you can be doing on the plan in the meantime, and we'll just, we'll take it from there. But, you know, we'd like to continue with this plan, address the other comments, see where we stand on that, and then we can decide what happens.
Have you looked into how that small little parcel, or five-foot strip, is going to tie in with the frontages along the junkyard and whatever the township is planning at that intersection?
Not yet. I'm in the process of getting some of those.
Because I think that would be valuable.
Township engineer had mentioned those plans are around, so.
I think that would be valuable to this board to see exactly what that road's going to look like, and then have this.
Absolutely. There may be an opportunity that there's, maybe there's not as much needed, so, yeah. Tony and I had spoken. We're working on getting those plans to tie that together and see what the actual impact is.
I would thank both our solicitor and engineer for your comments, and I'm in agreement with both of them. They have something very logical steps next. And given that there are multiple engineering issues that you also need to work through before we see you again, I think it would make sense to take that first step, as the solicitor suggested, to have that conversation.
We don't have an issue with it.
And come back to this board with a little bit more clearer picture of.
Yeah, and if we have it narrowed down to just that item, then it helps you move forward.
Correct. We need more information.
I did have a question about one of the comments about the sidewalk and potentially a crosswalk to the existing sidewalk on the west side of Eck Road.
Yes.
Is the developer amenable to that, or?
Yes, yeah, that makes sense. That would occur, I think, to the north of our driveway.
Yeah, that's.
And not build that little bit of sidewalk between our driveway and the railroad, because the other side have already done those improvements and has that crossing.
Yeah, and it would probably drop off, and we've had issues on the other side with the sidewalk that's currently closed, kids playing, using it as a ramp, so.
So, no, absolutely, that's.
And you're willing to give us the time extension and?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll work.
Yeah, but we know we have to because we were planning.
Does any, does anybody have any questions on the board? Now it's the time for, what's that?
Yeah.
Now it's time for the courtesy of the four, for any members of the public that want to comment on this.
We have a couple callers. I'll just unmute them and see if they want to speak.
Okay.
So if you called in, I'm unmuting you, if I can. I don't, I've allowed them to unmute, but I can't tell if they're unmuting or not.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Please give your name and address.
My name is Connie Raybold. I live at 4644 Huckleberry Road. And my question is, so I live across the Turnpike from Purina, and I'm curious how.
So are you asking about the Purina project?
Yes.
This is a different project that will be the next one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, we'll talk to you soon.
Stay tuned.
I know.
Give me your time extension while we're here.
It makes our motion really easy, then. Do I hear a motion to take this under advisement?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 opposed? And any extensions? Passes.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
And coordinate with the Push Cars. It's really essential to this project. The next project is the NPPC, or Nestle Purina Pet Care Allentown PA Facility New Municipal Water Service, major plan 2023-105. Greg, will you do the staff presentation?
Yes. This is an application to develop the property located at 2050 Pope Road. The plan proposes the construction of approximately 4,400 linear feet of waterline within the right-of-way of Huckleberry Road from Ware Mill Road onto 2050 Pope Road, as well as an associated 40,000 gallon water tank and 832 square foot mechanical building on the 2050 Pope Road property. The property is to be served by public water and will have private septic, and is zoned IC 1, special height limitation industrial commercial 1. Nestle Purina Pet Care is the owner and applicant. The Community Development Department, recommendation is that should the Planning Commission find the plan sufficient to advance them to the Board of Commissioners, we would recommend that the applicant comply with the following conditions. One, that the applicant execute subdivision improvement, security, maintenance, and indemnification agreements acceptable to township and its solicitor, that sufficient security in a form acceptable to township be posted, and that such security shall be available for draws, presentations, no further than 60 miles from township's office, and evidence of insurance coverage and an amount satisfactory to the township in sole discretion shall be provided prior to the plan being recorded. Two, that the applicant addresses the satisfaction township engineer the comments of Mr. Anthony Talarida, as contained in his review dated October 12th, 2023. Three, that the applicant addresses the satisfaction township water and sewer engineer the comments of Mr. Jason Newhart, as contained in his review dated October 9th, 2023. Four, that the applicant addresses the satisfaction township geotechnical consultant, the comments of Mr. Chris Taylor, as contained in his review dated October 13th, 2023. Five, that the applicant addresses the satisfaction of the Community Development Department, the comments of Mr. Greg Adams, as contained in his review dated October 12th, 2023. Six, that the applicant addresses the satisfaction of the zoning officer, the comments of Ms. Laura Harrier, as contained in her forthcoming review, which I think is now dated October 16th, 2023. Seven, that the applicant addresses the satisfaction of Public Works Department, the comments of Mr. Herb Bender, as contained in his forthcoming review, which is also dated October 16th, 2023. Nine, that the applicant complies with the forthcoming recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Board. Ten, that the applicant complies with the forthcoming recommendation of the Landscape and Shade Tree Commission. Eleven, that the applicant addresses all issues and obtains all approvals deemed necessary by the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners in as far as matters pertaining to township's water and sewer service are concerned. These may include, but not limited to, whether water and sewer allocation tapping fees are required, and if required, what the amount will be, and whether a fair share contribution will be required, and if required, the amount of the contribution. Eleven, if deemed to be necessary, the applicant attains a favorable review of the drainage plan from the LVPC prior to the plan being presented to the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners. Thirteen, that the applicant obtains a letter from LCCD approving the Soil Erosion and Sedimentation Control Plan, or the NPDES Permit Application pursuant to Section 312-39E of SALDO. Fourteen, if deemed to be necessary, the applicant obtains a letter from PADEP approving the sewage facility's planning module or exemption there, too. Fifteen, that the applicant shall dedicate to the township a utility easement of sufficient size in an area acceptable to the township for accessing the water meter pit. The dedication shall occur prior to the plan being recorded. The dedication shall be by deed of dedication in a form acceptable to township solicitor, and an opinion of record title shall be prepared by the applicant's counsel indicating that the dedication is free and clear of liens and encumbrances that would affect the township's use of said property. The applicant shall furnish to the township solicitor a description of the dedication that has been approved by the township engineer, and a copy of the current deed for the property showing current ownership and recording information. Sixteen, that the applicant shall dedicate a utility easement of sufficient size between, in the area acceptable to township for access to and to perform maintenance on the 12-inch water line between the right-of-way of Huckleberry Road and the water meter pit. This will be under the same conditions as the prior condition. Seventeen, that the applicant shall agree upon satisfactory completion of all water facilities shown in the plan as intended for dedication to the township to execute formal bills of sale for said facilities, so as to convey said facilities to the township for nominal consideration. Eighteen, and this is a change from the one in your packet, that the applicant shall install the tap and connect the curb boxes to the main, and pay for all costs incurred by the homeowners to connect the water laterals to the residential dwellings located at 4095 Huckleberry Road, 4108 Huckleberry Road, 4113 Huckleberry Road, 4137 Huckleberry Road, 4174 Huckleberry Road, 4167 Huckleberry Road, 4187 Huckleberry Road, 4188 Huckleberry Road, 4193 Huckleberry Road, 4205 Huckleberry Road, 4210 Huckleberry Road, 4221 Huckleberry Road, and 4236 Huckleberry Road. In the event that the property owner does not wish to connect to the public water system, the property owner shall be solely responsible for paying the fees assessed by the township for electing not to connect pursuant to township regulations. The maintenance period for the installation of these water lines shall coincide with the maintenance period for the overall project. Nineteen, if deemed to be necessary, the applicant shall be responsible for making necessary arrangements with the municipality and the public service company involved for streetlights, as approved by the Board of Commissioners, and shall be further responsible for providing utility easements for lighting standards and fixtures in accordance with Section 31241a1a of SALDO. Twenty, if deemed to be necessary, the applicant shall dedicate, oh, I'm sorry, shall execute a covenant, declaration of covenants and easements for the maintenance of stormwater management facilities prepared by the township solicitor for the maintenance of the onsite water, stormwater management facilities. Twenty-one, that the plan be amended to include note referencing the state highway law pursuant to Section 508.6 of the PAMPC and Section 31212a9 of SALDO. Twenty-two, that the applicant reconciles all open invoices for township engineering and legal services prior to the plan being recorded, and twenty-three, that the plans be revised and deemed to be clean prior to them being presented to the Board of Commissioners. The Planning Commission's soft deadline to act on the plan is November 20th, 2023. The Board of Commissioners's hard deadline to act on the plan is December 20th, 2023.
Thank you, Greg. And now it's the applicant's presentation portion of the agenda.
I'll try not to make the same mistake that Eric made. I turned the microphone on. My name's Stephanie Cobble. I'm from Fitzpatrick, Linsin, Boobah, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Nestle Purina. With me is Chris Williams from Berry Isit, and he is the project engineer on this matter. Generally, what we're here tonight is for the extension of municipal water to the plant, a water tank and a small pump house. Not so much, I know it's classified as land development, but it's really not so much, all that much land development going on here tonight. I will turn the mic over to Chris to go through some of the comments in the review letter that we think might be pertinent, and then, of course, we're here to answer any and all questions the Planning Commission or the public may have.
So we're here to answer any questions you have. We have some waivers to go through. I just handed out a waiver request letter that's updated. The original waiver letter had eight waivers in it. This one's updated with 10 total. So if you'd like, I could start going through that waiver letter, or if you have any questions, we're here to answer them.
So it's just the water line? Like, you're changing any manufacturing, expanding manufacturing, you know?
No.
I know probably the residents or surrounding neighborhood is going to want to know, like, what's the purpose of this?
Right. Yeah, it's just to reduce their reliance on the existing wells that they use today. It'll improve their water quality and be a more dependable water source for the plant. So there's no increase in production, no increase in employees as part of this project.
Is there any questions from the board regarding the plans?
I noticed that you're doing a entrance improvement off of Huckleberry. Is the intent to stay the same use? I see the expansion. It looks like you try handle maybe a truck radius coming out, so you want to explain that?
The original thought there was that there's been some, perhaps some rutting on the sides of the entrances. So while we're doing this work, we would just widen the entrances. But based on the comments we received, we just decided to eliminate that from the proposal. So going forward, there will be no more widening of the entrance, and that means there would be no impervious increase either. And that entrance is not for use by trucks either.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions by the board? I guess we can look at your waiver request letter.
So about half of these waivers are related to not showing, the request to not have to show additional features outside of our project area and on adjacent properties. So it might be easiest if I just, just kind of sum them all up with that statement. So it's numbers one through five, and then one of the new ones that we added is number nine. So they all fall into that general category. So the first one, number one, this is Section 312- So the first one, number one, this is Section 31212B15. This is the requirement to show contours on the entire tract and on adjacent land within 400 feet of the property, and our property is about 115 acres. We're hoping to not have to show all these improvements that are completely unrelated to the development that we're proposing tonight. Similarly, the second one, 31212B21, the section requires showing sidewalks, trails, driveways, easements, rights-of-way within 400 feet of the site. Number three is Section 31212B17. The section requires showing names of owners on immediately adjacent land and names of existing proposed subdivisions on the plan. So being that the property is so large, we're hoping to not have to show all that information on this set of plans, being that we're just proposing this water line. Number four is Section 31212B14. The section requires showing bearings and distances on the entire property. Number five is Section 31212B20. The section, the ordinance requires, we show the location, character, and elevation of any building within 100 feet of the tract. There could be an extensive number of buildings that we'd have to add to the plans if required, so we're asking for that waiver as well. And then skipping to number nine, it falls in the same general category. This is Section 31212B19. This section requires showing names of owners, parcel ID numbers, buildings, and all utilities within 100 feet of the tract.
Does any board member have any questions regarding those six that you outlined? Tony, do you have any comment on this?
We have no engineering objection for those six.
I guess we're back to number six?
Okay, thanks. Number six is Section 31235B3. The section requires improvements along public streets, so I believe this would include curb and sidewalk. We're asking for a deferral from this section because the main project area is within the interior of the existing plant, and we're only proposing a water line. There's no new entrances proposed, no road construction, no increased traffic demand with this project. So we're, we're asking for a deferral of that, of these requirements. There's also no curb or sidewalk adjacent to the property that it would tie into, so it seems like these kind of features wouldn't really be necessary in this setting.
Does any board member have a question? Okay, you can go on.
All right, number seven, 31241A1A. The section requires installation of streetlights. So along Huckleberry Road, the nearest streetlight to the west is on the opposite side of the Turnpike, several hundred feet down Huckleberry. And then to the east, it's more like 1,000 or 2,000 feet till you get to a streetlight. So being that this is in a rural setting, didn't feel like streetlights would be warranted along this stretch of roadway.
Are you requesting a deferral or waiver of that?
We're requesting a waiver of that requirement.
I personally would support a deferral, so if at some point in the future, streetlights were warranted specifically in front of this development, it would make sense to have the deferral available to the township.
I concur. I concur with Commissioner Kelly.
Yeah, I agree with that as well. I prefer probably a deferral versus a waiver.
Okay, understood.
Just in case.
All right, moving on. Number eight, this is Section 31212F3. The section, the ordinance requires that permits not be issued until the plan is recorded. And similarly, number 10, which is Section 31243, the section requires that building construction can't commence until improvements required by the commissioners have been constructed or guaranteed. So we're just hoping to waive these two sections of the ordinance so that we could start construction once we have preliminary plan approval from the commissioners and when we have our NPDES permit and outside agency approvals. Just try not to get held up with plan recording and other agreements before we break ground.
Does any board member have a question on this, or these two?
I'm just curious specifically, is there, I'm, I'm conscious that you're in that the typical timeline of the township to get these plans recorded wouldn't fit into your project?
Well, I can't personally speak to the, the schedule of the overall project, just as a designer, but, you know, if someone from Nestle wants to speak to that. Just the, the timing and the possible delays of the project urges you to get started.
You need to come to the microphone because we're hybrid virtual.
Good evening. I'm Jeannie Lee from Nestle Purina. The question has to do with being able to start construction prior to recording of the plans, and I don't think we had any malicious intent. I think it was just sometimes that can drag on until you get the signatures, get to the courthouse, so we were just hoping to eliminate not being able to get started while we were doing those.
Basic.
Basic things. I don't think that it, I don't think if, if, if we would have to wait, it just holds up the project and the construction, so. And, and with a, you always want to time a construction project at the most optimal time of the year, so we wouldn't want to miss the window and have to move into the following year to, to get the construction done, so it was just.
And you'd be willing to work with the township? And, you know, some limits on what can and cannot be done.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Does our solicitor have any thoughts?
I, I guess what you're proposing, though, goes beyond the typical site work that we deal with in a pre-security agreement, correct? Yes. Which we could agree to in the form of a pre-security agreement, as we have done with other projects, without having to grant deferrals or waivers that you're requesting on these two sections, correct?
Yeah, if that's, if that's who you want to handle it, yeah.
So we don't need those two anymore?
Are you okay if we just simply strike those requests?
Sure. That was all 10?
Eight.
Well, eight.
Are there any additional questions from the board?
I actually have a quick question on that entrance. I know you said you eliminated the expansion, but I do understand historically it was used when 309 was closed for trucks in and out, maybe temporarily. I don't know if anyone else on the commission?
Yeah, while the Turnpike Bridge was being replaced and there was a closure of 309, the trucks were using that entrance.
So where I'm headed with this, should an issue with 309 come up again where it's closed and trucks have to utilize that entrance in an emergency or temporarily, and you had rutting issues, and you could end up with mud and sediment on the road, does that bother township staff? Is that generally on the property owner to clean it up, or, you know, I don't know if there's any storm. So then I'm headed towards stormwater, getting sediment in the stormwater inlets adjacent, if there are any. So it may be prudent to actually do that, maybe not for daily use, but for an emergency use or temporary use should 309 be, you know, under construction or something at some point in the future.
And yes, that would be on Nestle to clean the road up.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to.
Yeah. I, I thought you would, but I was just thinking, you know, would you necessarily be doing it in a downpour if trucks were leaving and, you know, taking the road money? It's just food for thought.
The back gate here that is shown on this plan on Huckleberry Road is strictly for employees and contractors with regular pickup trucks to enter and exit. We do not intend to ever have tractor-trailers come and go at that exit, at that entrance. We're not set up for that. We have extensive security protocols that anybody entering the site need to go through, and that's only at the Pope Road entrance. So even if we wanted to, that would be quite a feat to be able to pivot and have people coming and going in that gate that don't have, and already have a badge that they can get in and out of.
Okay, great. Thanks for clarification. Appreciate it.
Is the board done? Now it's the time for, courtesy of the floor, a public comment?
We will step away and turn off the mic.
Is there anybody in the audience in the room that has a question regarding this Please give your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Jenny Furito. I reside at 4210 Huckleberry Road and.
And Tadora, same address.
I just wanted to seek clarification regarding Community Development Department Recommendation Number 18. As it previously read, the applicant was going to pay for installation and connection fees associated with public water, but I just wanted to seek clarification that we as the resident, should we elect to hook up to the public water, would have to cover all of those fees upfront and that, and then get reimbursed after the fact. Is that correct?
That would have to be worked out with Nestle. I know they are in agreeance to pay with them. I don't know if Nestle would like to speak to that while they're in the room.
So it is something that generally Nestle is willing to work with the township on, but there's a lot of details on how that payment and the logistics of it would work that we're going to have to work through with the township. So, you know, I wish I could give you a more definitive answer, but as you can imagine, there's a lot of moving parts there.
As you can imagine, the residents want to make informed decisions, and I like data. I like to do cost-benefit analysis, so I don't have any data right now to make a decision, but should I elect not to connect, I'm curious, who at the township would I coordinate to determine what the fee would be for not connecting? Like, I need data, and I need to know, you know, because we're on our own well. I, I don't know what water usage fee is. Like, I need these pieces of information in order to make the best decision for our household. So I guess I, I'm very curious who I can get information from at the township regarding the fee for not connecting should we elect to do so.
Our Director of Township Operations is.
Yes, if you just call in and ask to speak to Herb Bender, that's myself.
Herb Bender.
Yes, I can get you all those numbers.
Thank you, sir.
And does our solicitor have any comment regarding that aspect of this discussion?
I do not. I agree with Ms. Kobol. There's a lot of moving parts and a lot of details that haven't been worked out yet, so.
Got it.
We'll, 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 you know, be in constant communication, I think, regarding the project as it progresses with the homeowners as well, should you have questions.
And this may seem mundane, but, you know, I'm just curious, where is the water sourced from? If, should we elect to connect, I'm just curious where the township sources the water.
We have, we have wells throughout our system, and we also purchase water from the city of Allentown.
Thank you. I was looking at the preliminary drawings, and for our property, property 4210, I saw that the proposed service connection with the curb box was on the far west side of our property where there would be a conflict with underground electric utility. I was curious if the residents have any say in where the proposed service connection curb boxes would be and where it would connect to the house, because where it's currently proposed doesn't make sense with where our current well and water treatment facilities are within our house.
Yes, that can all be worked out. It's very early in the plan sets, so yes, it's just showing that it'll go to that house.
Very good. And this is slightly off-topic, but Mr. Domeback, you struck a chord in my heart. I know it's been stated that the entrance on Huckleberry Road is not for trucks. Jennifer works from home. There's an awful lot of semis that are trying to get to Purina that find themselves on Huckleberry Road. There is a lot of rutting along this stretch of road, and the semis always attempt to turn up Church Road. We have a road sign in our yard that states that no, no trucks are allowed on Church Road. It's a continual issue. I would love to know if there is a liaison from the township and/or Purina that we could get better signage, because it's a continual issue, and I know it really infuriates the residents in this immediate vicinity. So I'd love to take that offline with the township, with Purina. I've called before and was redirected to the police. I don't think that's appropriate use of their time. It could be a simple fix with better signage. So I'm not angry, I'm just looking for better signage so we don't have this continual rutting and semis going up Church Road when there's signage at both ends of Church Road that there should not be tractor-trailer traffic.
Again, that would be myself you would have to contact, so.
We're going to be talking.
We could set up a time to meet and go over everything. That's not a problem at all.
I would love that. I, I think that concludes everything on my list. Did I miss anything?
Other than the project schedule itself. I know that you're saying there's a lot that's in the works, but what, what is the general timeline for this, with the anticipated?
Well, I can say that we just submitted the NPDES permit with DEP, so we're in for a six-month process there, and then we have some agreements to work out with the township before we get started. So it's Q2, I guess, next year? Yeah, second quarter.
Okay.
That's all the questions.
Thank you all. Appreciate your time.
Thank you for.
If I could just make a comment with regards to information to the residents that will have the water line run to in front of the house. We've had a similar situation elsewhere in the township, and letters have been provided with all of the information in it. Once we get through all the details, that information will be provided.
Is there anyone else in the audience with a question or comment on this proposal? Anybody online? Earlier there was.
Yes, this is Connie Rabel.
We can hear you. Thank you, Connie.
Can you give your address?
Oh. 4644 Huckleberry Road.
Thank you.
So I also have a concern with the truck traffic. I live, my driveway is on the same side as the back entrance to Purina, and I'm right on the other side of the overpass of the Turnpike. And when the bridge was shut down, I did have a tractor-trailer come up my driveway, do damage, big ruts in the yard, and drove over big rocks that I had. Of course, it was like 1:30 in the morning. My house sits high up on the hill, so I didn't hear it. And they left and left all the damage for us to clean up, so. And just this past weekend, I was going to Target, and there was a truck that tried to turn in there and was trying to get back out, blocking both sides of Huckleberry, so no one could get through on either side until he got his truck out and turned around. And he did go up and turn down Church Road. So I am concerned with that also, because I feel like there has to be communication, more communication with the delivery trucks, that they absolutely should not be coming down Huckleberry Road, because I do see a lot more trucks coming down now. So. Go ahead.
As the previous people had, had stated, we're well aware of this, and I'm sure the rock star in the room, Herb Bender, will, will, and probably reach out to me, to my day employer, and we're all very well aware of. And we're all very well aware of wayward trucks and any... I'm sure Nestle Purina will be willing to work with us on additional signage and even communicating to drivers servicing their location. So we will look into this definitely for you.
Thank you. And then one other question. So that when they start this project, what will be the impact on driving on Huckleberry Road? Is it going to get closed down at all?
Again, it's very early. We have not had those conversations yet. Depending where the water line lines up, it could end up in the middle of the road, which then, yes, we would have to shut it down. If it's closer to one side, there's potentially there where we could flag it and keep the road open. But that all has to be worked out yet. It's not finalized.
But the neighborhood will be informed. Our township does a wonderful job of informing during paving and any kind of road closures of all our residents. So rest assured, you'll be well aware of what's going on.
Thank you.
I would just add that for now, it's proposed in the north, the westbound lane of Huckleberry.
Okay. Is there anybody else online or on the phones?
There's a caller online, and I don't have the ability to unmute you here. So if you can unmute your phone if you have any questions or comments.
Hearing none. It was a pleasure of the board to handle the waiver request.
Yes.
The first request is a... It's a waiver from subdivision and land development, Arsaldo, Section 312-12B15. This section of the ordinance requires the contours of the entire tract and adjacent land within 100 feet be shown. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Second one is subdivision and land development ordinance, Section 312-12B21. This section of the ordinance requires that all sidewalks, trails, driveways, streets, easements, and rights-of-way streets, easements and rights-of-way, platted and existing within 400 feet of the shite be shown on the plans. Do I hear a motion for approval?
I'm moved.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? I'm assuming no abstentions. Subdivision and land development ordinance, Section 312-12B17. This section of the ordinance requires that the names of owners of immediately adjacent land and names of existing or proposed subdivisions be shown on the plan. Is there a motion to approve? So moved. I'll second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The next is subdivision and land development ordinance, Section 312-12B14. This section of the ordinance requires boundaries of the tract showing bearings and distances to be shown on the plans. Do I hear a motion for approval? I'm moved. I'll second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is subdivision and land development ordinance, Section 312-12B20. This section of the ordinance requires that a plan shown show the location, character, and elevation of any building within 100 feet of the tract. Do I hear a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the next one is... What's that? Oh, any opposed? I think I heard everybody.
Okay, wasn't sure.
Yeah. You never know. Somebody could...
I don't know.
This one might be controversial. Subdivision and land development ordinance, Section 312-35B3. This section of the ordinance requires improvements along public streets. They are requesting a deferral from this section of the ordinance. Do I hear a motion for approval?
A motion to defer.
I'll second that. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next is subdivision and land development ordinance, Section 312-41A1A. This section of the ordinance requires installation of streetlights. And from our prior discussion, we were requesting a deferral of this rather than the waiver that was requested in the letter. Do I hear a motion to approve this ordinance deferral?
Motion to defer.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number eight was stricken due to the pre-security agreement. And number nine is subdivision and land development ordinance, Section 312-12B19. This section of the ordinance requires that a plan show the names of owners, parcel IDs, existing buildings, sewer mains, water mains, culverts, sewer storm sewers, petroleum product lines, gas lines, transmission lines, fire hydrants, underground tanks, wells, septic systems within 100 feet of the tract. Do I hear a motion to approve the waiver?
I'm moved.
Second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. And the last one was stricken due to the pre-security agreement. Now it's the motion to approve the plan with 23 conditions. And 18 was replaced with a... By Greg, showing all the affected property owners for the water discussion. And we have assurances from the township that they will take care of notifying and getting information to the residents affected. Do I hear a motion to approve the...
I'll make a motion to approve as noted.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Good luck with your project. Next on the agenda is the transportation update. Tony?
Thank you. I have bad news. So the tip was reviewed, and there was a handful of changes. No one's pointing fingers, but there was some reallocation needed because of money, and things were pushed. So the 309 betterment let date has been moved about a year from May 24 to actually June 25. 309 Tillman was actually held, still has a let date of 2024. That's good news. The Mon Chung signal let date, May 24, has been pushed to May 25. So they're reallocating money. There's been comments that came in. They're actually going to a new comment period, I believe. I don't know. They haven't decided the amount of time, but it's...
They're waiting on federal highways to give them a blessing.
So there'll be re-comment period if anyone wants to get involved. But money's still coming. It's just about a year behind. So that's what I have.
Okay, and the next agenda item is meeting dates. So Greg?
Yes, thank you. I do want to do this early to ensure that this is properly advertised for next year. So I figured now is as good a time as any to formally adopt the new meeting dates for next year. This is on the final page of your packet. We are moving the planning commission meeting from the third Thursday to the second Thursday of the month. And we will start the meeting at 7:00. Instead of the 7 o'clock pre-meeting, 7:30 meeting start, this will now move to 7:00. And we will bundle the pre-meeting into the regular meeting. So those are the changes proposed on the public face. For procedural changes, we're adding a few new ones, but that will be basically for the engineers of every applicant that comes in. So.
So this is more for the efficiency of the township?
Yes.
And staff?
And staff. And of course, you know, getting the meeting date to 7:00 helps, you know, with the residents who come out and want to deal with this, so you all can go home a half an hour earlier.
Sorry. And I know there was some burdens on you having a commission and then a planning commission.
And it will help that as well.
Okay. I mean, I'm okay with all the dates, so.
Okay.
Yes.
If you want to do a formal motion, that would be lovely.
Do I hear a motion to approve the calendar for 2024?
I'm moved.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Well, thank you.
Get to advertising.
And now, if I may, I believe I need about half an hour to stretch this in order to annoy my two colleagues over here. So...
Courtesy of the floor?
Sure, why not?
Is there anybody in the public that would like to make a comment regarding anything? And what's on the agenda for next month?
I can say that there are no new applications for November. Now, the way our current system is set up, the deadline for resubmissions is next Thursday. So we're going to see what comes in as resubmissions. I've heard no rumors, but that means nothing. I can get three or four of them coming in. So but at least no new ones for November.
Okay. Thank you, Greg. And our final agenda item is adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adjourned. Thank you, everyone.